Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all very much for doing that and joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do a roll call, please. Allison?
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton. Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Well, thank you very much for that. We're going to, next item on the agenda is special presentations. Item A is Albany Fire Department Life Saving Awards. Fire Chief Shane Wooton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. If we haven't met, my name is Shane Wooton and I'm Fire Chief of the Albany Fire Department. And this evening, we want to recognize some community members as well as members of our organization with some significant awards. Let me start by describing the process, internal process we have before this point. So some sort of action or activity has to take place that's witnessed by our crews, by the staff of the Albany Fire Department. They come back if they feel it's warranted and they complete an application, an award application, that then gets submitted up through the chain of command and then to awards committee. This committee is our individuals throughout the organization, different individuals throughout the organization, and they vote to see if one, the award that's being presented is proper and justified, and two, then they'll make any sort of adjustments necessary. So tonight, we're handing out some civilian life-saving awards as well as some life-saving awards to fire department personnel. So for the City of Albany employees, you're going to love this. I have a PowerPoint. There were some sighs and a little bit of excitement, I think. Okay. So usually I do these presentations and I don't really have pictures to help describe what it is I'm explaining. But here's a couple of pictures that maybe will add some context to what I'm going to read. Okay. On the early morning of December 18th, 2023, Albany Fire Department responded to Green Acres Avenue for a structure fire. Upon our arrival, crews were notified by some neighbors that there was a victim still inside. One of the occupants became trapped inside a small bathroom and was attempting to get out. There were neighbors present who were trying to assist him out of the window by grabbing his arms and pulling him to safety. Due to mobility issues and intense heat and smoke that was ventilating from the bathroom window, the victim became overwhelmed and collapsed back into the bathroom that was full of heat and smoke. To the civilians that we're going to recognize, I really cannot imagine the feeling of holding onto somebody's arms, trying to rescue them, and then to see them fall back into the abyss of the smoke and the heat. I'm sure that's a vision that will be ingrained in your mind for a long time. Without hesitation, after the victim fell back into the smoke, without hesitation, the neighbors quickly told the Albany Fire Department where the victim was and our firefighters dove into the bathroom window, which is the picture on the right, into the heat with no visibility. Thankfully, the victim was right where the neighbors said he would be, but due to the patient's size and being unconscious, they could not lift him out of the bathroom window. So a firefighter from the outside quickly turned what was a window into a door. The firefighters were able to extricate the patient, start CPR, and successfully resuscitated the patient, who was then transported to Good Sam and Carvalis. Other than the patient, three people were injured on that fire, one civilian, one APD officer, and one of the firefighters that dove through the window into the smoke. So Battalion Chief Jamie Smith and his entire shift will be recognized with a unit citation for their efforts that morning, but we wanted to specifically recognize those whose actions saved a fellow human life. So if I could ask Linda Phillips, Mark Phillips, and Darren Gist to come forward. Mr. Mayor, if you would join us. Looks like Mr. Gist is not here, so... Okay. So I'll give you the hose. So on behalf of the Albany Fire Department, this Fire Chief, I want to thank you for your efforts. It takes a community to do our job and the fact that you stepped up that morning and did what you did, even getting injured, your efforts saved someone's life. And I can, we are so grateful for that. So, Mr. Mayor, please. For the Phillips family, I will say, for the record, go Beets. Okay. And if I could have firefighter Davis Blackman, apparatus operator Chris McNeese, and Lieutenant Shane Castle, in recognition of their bravery and life-saving actions, we are recognizing all three with the life-saving award. So.
Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Is that where the list is? Is it to you in order?
I appreciate it.
Shane Castle. I know we... Well, you keep... I've got two minutes to talk and then I'll go back.
I'll just stay down here.
Okay. And then we will do this. These two right here. Okay. The next group we would like to recognize is two employees of AA Towing, Jason Raul, Randy Uselinger. But before I get to that, I want to give everybody a little bit of background about Albany Fire Department's relationship with AA Towing. The Albany Fire Department has a long history with AA Towing that goes back decades. When we hire a new firefighter, AA Towing delivers vehicles to Station 12 for people to practice dismantling the vehicle in order for us to practice removing injured patients. Whether it's to learn more about roadside safety or working with our water rescue team pulling cars out of a river, we have a long history of training together. They are an amazing partner and we are grateful for the relationship we have with Van Beckner and his team. Okay. So pictures up here to give you a perspective. On February 11th, 2:00 in the morning, the Albany Fire Department and Albany Police Department were dispatched to a vehicle in the Vine Street Canal. Units arrived to find the vehicle on its top with the trapped occupant that was unable to get out of the vehicle. The victim was partially submerged in water and was becoming increasingly weak due to hyperthermia. The rescue was extremely technically challenging and required the vehicle to be stabilized to prevent it from being pushed under Third Avenue while at the same time, we were trying to rescue a victim. High-angle rope rescue equipment was required for the rescuers to operate safely as well as for the rescue of the victim as the vehicle was upside down and moving water. The events that morning showed the members of the Albany Fire Department working in conjunction with an amazing community partner to accomplish a rescue that was extremely challenging and difficult. So similar to the incident before, we will be recognizing Battalion Chief Kevin Vining and his entire shift with a unit citation for their efforts that morning. So if I could have Jason and Randy come up? Okay. I got it. I know I make it easy sometimes. Okay. The team working that night and our awards committee believed we might not have been able to safely rescue that patient if it were not for your efforts. Our department would like to recognize you with the civilian life-saving award and a department challenge coin. Thank you very much. We appreciate all you do and all the familiar faces and seeing you guys out there. Can't thank you enough. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you. Towing companies, I will say, are, I don't know that people always want to editorialize just a smidge. I don't know that people really recognize the role that they play on an emergency scene and how important their job is. And we're fortunate to have, like I mentioned, man and his team to train with us, to keep his folks trained, his equipment, top shape. You're an excellent partner and I just want to, as I enter my retirement, or getting close to retirement, I just want to thank you very much on behalf of the department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys plan on leaving, go ahead and do it now so we can start the meeting.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief. Next on tonight's agenda, item Dravil, Len County Veterans Day Parade, Christine Ferguson.
I'm gonna start this over here and pass it around. My name's Christine Ferguson. This will be my third year in charge of the Veterans Day Parade. I don't know if they love me or if they just can't find anybody else to do the job. So for the first time ever, the parade was awarded the Oregon Ovation Award for Community Impact. And y'all's Parks and Recreation Department were also awarded an ovation award for adaptability, innovative adaptability. So Albany got two of the Oregon Ovation Awards this year. Just in case you want to know, we're solvent, but we're looking for sponsors. Our theme this year is Freedom, Continental Army to Space Force. Our goal is, as usual, to end the year solvent. And our parade this year is on Monday, November 11th. So far, we have 22 entries, which is kind of amazing to me. On our website, we've made two additions. We have a resource button. Under the resource button, there are two pages. There's a page for veteran support organizations like Disabled American Veterans, the VFW, all those kinds of stuff. And then on the other page on our website, there's a list of veteran-owned businesses locally, so that if anybody wants to specifically hire a veteran, you can go to our website. We have like 45 veteran-owned businesses from people that put glass in your windows to clean out your house, to mow your lawn, all kinds of things. So if you know a veteran and we don't currently have them on our website, please let them know and we'll be glad to put them on our website. I went, I have a broken window in the front of my house. I went looking for a veteran company and I couldn't find a listing of veteran-owned businesses locally. So that's how we managed to put that page on our website. Anything else about the parade, you can find on our website, LenCountyVeteransDayParade.org. If you have any information for me, please get it to me. One of the things I wanted to talk about is two years from now, it'll be the 75th anniversary of this parade, and I would like it to be really something special. So if you have any ideas that would help me with that, please get in touch with me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation and I look forward to spending the day with you at the memorial and then on the parade.
Yep.
Next on tonight's agenda is Mr. Alex Rice regarding 32nd Street, 36th and Irvine walking path.
I don't see on your...
Oh, I didn't see what's canceled. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I didn't see what's canceled due to a personal matter and so they will not be speaking with us tonight. They'll be joining us at another time. So Mr. Rice, you have the floor? You have three minutes, sir? And thank you for sending your information.
Thank you. Mayor Johnson, Counselor Smith, and Attorney Counsel, thank you for hearing me out today. On your day, I miswrote it down. On your day, to talk about the pedestrian pathway between Irvine Street and 36th Avenue over by South Island High School and the possibility of having that reopened. It's been closed for, I believe, from the information I received, 15 years now. So I'd like to just point out, high school generally only lasts four years, so probably the problem, students who were the reason for closing in the first place have likely moved on. I'd really like to hone in on the safety and mobility aspect of this. With that path closed, pedestrians and cyclists are forced to take a circuitous route through there. They either have to go on Columbus Street or, and this is the one I really want to hone in on, they have to go to Waverly Street, which is a busy and known dangerous street. There was a high-profile collision between a motorist and a pedestrian last year that resulted in a fatality. As if, you know, a sign from God on my way down here, I took the bus and witnessed an accident. Luckily, everybody was okay. It was a rear ending, but not 40 feet from the intersection of 36th and Waverly where students are forced to cross because that path is closed. It also discourages, this path discourages walking and biking and encourages driving, particularly among students who are teenagers, not known for their safe driving abilities. I also like to point out, there's a number of benefits to opening the path. It would make things safer for pedestrians because it would allow them to take a route that is not on busy streets, is on less busy side streets. This would be especially beneficial to the non-driving high school students. It would also improve north-south connectivity, would open up a corridor that leads directly to Grand Prairie Park and by extension, the Periwinkle Creek Trail. I'd also like to refer to the city's climate-friendly equitable community rules. And one of the priorities of that is reducing emissions from transportation. So I think anything and everything we can be doing to encourage people and make it easy for people to get around without using automobiles is really important. And for people for whom that is not a priority, I'd also like to point out that making it easier for people to walk and bike reduces the need for people to drive, so it'll just lower traffic. This will also, because we'll be taking pedestrian traffic off of the main street, Waverly, it'll reduce the potential for pedestrian and cyclist versus auto conflicts. And finally, the thing I'd like to point out is, with all these benefits, this is a really cheap and easy thing to do. It involves simply taking out the length, the chain link fence there. So thank you for hearing me out today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rice. I appreciate it. I like your first name, by the way. Next on tonight's agenda would be, excuse me, the business from the council's Director Grotto from the Downtown Association.
Good evening. Just want to do a quick downtown update. I'm Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. Just a few things highlighting from our monthly newsletter. The Albany Civic Theater is presenting Eclipse. If you saw that, great. You may have missed that. They are often available also streaming, so you could check on that. We have our downtown Easter egg hunt that is starting this Saturday, so kids can go around downtown, look at the business windows and hunt for "eggs" in quotes that'll be taped to the windows. So that goes on through Easter Sunday. Coming up early in April is Albany Taps and Caps. That's a fundraiser for Furniture Share and it's put on by our four breweries, tap houses, and the Downtown Association. Tickets are available on the Furniture Share website already. Our Meet the Neighbors this time highlights our downtown coffee cafes. So that would be Brim Coffee, Margin Coffee Roasters, and the new owners over at Sidekicks, which is over by the Amtrak station. They were, brought some attention in a positive way because they were open during the ice storm and a lot of the travelers at Amtrak were very appreciative that there was someplace to warm up and get food and coffee. Our Volunteer Spotlight highlights Matt Wadlington. He's our Board President. And we also have a calendar just full of events going on, so I'll let you check that out. On the Albany Visitors Photo Contest, deadline has passed, but I think if you can look into that, you should be able to be voting now for the People's Choice. So there should be lots of gorgeous photos coming up on that. So that just gives you a quick downtown update and I'll have newsletters available after this evening.
Thank you, Director. Next on tonight's agenda is the Award of Contracts, North Albany Lift Station Improvements. Stacy Castro and Nolan Nelson on Page Three of your packet.
Good evening. Staff is recommending that council approve a contract award in the amount of $963,000 to Kennedy Jenks of Portland, Oregon. This is to provide design services for replacement of the North Albany Sewer Lift Station. So in order to procure these services, staff followed a formal selection procedure that is defined in Oregon Administrative Rules and then also adopted by the city. A request for proposals was publicly advertised. Three consultants responded to the RFP and submitted proposals. All three consultants were deemed to be qualified. A five-person selection committee reviewed the proposals and based on the criteria in the RFP, the consultant Kennedy Jenks was unanimously selected to provide the design services. So now some background on the project. The need to replace the North Albany Lift Station was identified in the 2015 Waste Water Collection Facility Plan. The existing station is located north of Highway 20, west of Spring Hill. It provides sewer service for all of our wastewater customers in North Albany. The current station, it runs at capacity during peak flow events using the two pumps that are available, but this provides no redundancy should there be an emergency or an issue with the pumps. The existing station also doesn't have capacity for the future anticipated growth in North Albany. The new sewer lift station, it's going to be constructed on a parcel that the city owns that's adjacent to where the existing station is located. The design's going to include sizing the new pumps, a new wet well, a new electrical control building, a new generator, piping to connect to, there's an 18-inch sewer force main that discharge goes, it was bored underneath the Willamette River and then it discharges to our wastewater treatment plant. And then the design will also include switching from the old lift station to the new lift station and abandoning the old lift station. So a pretty complicated project. The project is in the current biennium budget in the Sewer Capital Projects Fund and it has a total estimated project cost of $3,125,000.
Counsel, any questions for Stacy? Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes. This is tangential to what you're saying. I'm fully in favor of having this done. It's necessary. But in years past, we actually would, when there was an RFP put out, we would get a sheet showing who, where they were from and what their bid was. And I'm wondering if we can possibly start that again and get those sent to us on any of the RFPs that are presented to us. But I'm fully in favor of this one, sure.
Sure. So with the formal procurement process, the RFP process, I could share the three consultants that submitted proposals, but we don't have cost proposals from them. The way the rules are written, it's a quality-based selection process and so we're not able to negotiate the price until the top proposer is identified. We do get a, I mean, I guess a broad sense of what the consultant's level of effort is going to be because they'll submit schedules with hours of staffing, but beyond that, we don't have an actual dollar amount.
Well, that may be true. You've got a very specific bid amount and that would be one of those that came from the other RFP responders, too?
They don't include a cost proposal.
Okay. So we came up with that number, how, that 900 and some?
Sure. The staff, Nolan Nelson and myself, Kennedy Jenks submitted a cost proposal with a schedule and a detailed scope of work that we reviewed and negotiated with them.
So the other companies did not do that?
Correct.
Because they weren't selected at the time?
Yeah. And the way the process works is if we don't agree with the top proposer, cost proposal and we're not able to negotiate what we think is the correct price for the scope of services, then we can then go to the next ranked consultant. But that didn't happen in this case.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Counselor Smith?
Two questions. The $3,125,000 total cost includes this cost.
Oh, thank you very much for that.
And we have had contractual relationships with Kennedy Jenks for other projects for Public Works. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
We have history.
They're based in Portland?
Yep.
Thank you. Yep?
Counselor Montague? Okay. Counselor Novak, do you have anything?
No, thanks. I will actually second the fact that I live in North Albany and I think it's definitely needed, I'm sure. Although the reference to more build-out, that makes me seriously wonder because, living in North Albany, I'm like, I don't know where you would put more houses. We have no room for more.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, you're fine. You made your comment. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I move that we award the professional services agreement in the amount of $963,000 to Kennedy Jenks Consultants, Inc. of Portland, Oregon.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Your motion's passed. Next on tonight is the adoption of the consent calendar. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions?
I just, you know, when we get to consent calendar, I think there's just, you know, we just do... we just do this quick approval or whatever. I just want to recognize all the work that's within the consent calendar, especially this time around, and just appreciate the staff and everyone who worked on everything that was on that, and appreciate any of those citizens that we are appointing to CAG appointments. It's really critical for our city, so just appreciations around.
Thank you, Counsel. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt a consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Counsel. Next is approval of agreements, intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Youth Authority, Director Kim LaDain, page 25 to 31 of your packet.
That's part of the consent calendar.
Oh, this part of the calendar, never mind. Oh, yeah, it is. Okay. Staff reports a salary grade adjustment for building official manager classification, Matthew, Commissioner, Director Matthew Rutgers. The sheet was passed out by the city clerk, and so you should have a copy of the sheet.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. So it's going to feel a little bit like deja vu, if you can remember back to August of 2022. So I was here, and we talked about a building grade adjustment for the building manager official position, where we adjusted the grade, recognizing the description for the job and the duties assigned were at a higher level. With this last budget cycle, and there was a truing up for non-bargainers and executives, we adjusted the pay grades. As part of that process, it didn't capture what we went through in August of 2022, so we're here kind of recapturing this. And it was an opportunity to kind of go back and take a look at the work we had done before, make sure it was still accurate, which we found that it was. The piece that is missing and that was handed out on your sheet today was the back sheet that wasn't in the original agenda packet, and that does have the information about the Human Resources Department is recommending the salary grade adjustment, as well as the budget impact, which is approximately $2,500 over the remainder of the biennium, about 15 months. So happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Counsel?
I'd like to clarify what we just heard for a second. The August of '22 change was to adjust the job description to reflect the work that was really being done?
The, in August of 2022, we adjusted the grade to match, so it was, so it's different than other managers, or building official manager was actually elevated to a different grade versus compared to some of the other managers, based on that job description. And to your point, Counselor, with this revision that we did this time, we actually went back and did some clarifying in the job description itself to capture, better capture, a lot of that information. So we're kind of leaving breadcrumbs for the future.
Okay. This illustrates how complicated HR is, and how pay grades and scales and steps and job descriptions and other duties as assigned, and there's a lot to, a lot of cats in that herd.
I did this at HP. I don't ever want to do it again. It's somebody else's job, okay? Counsel, do we have any questions or any other thing else? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to adopt the salary grade adjustment as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next from the council is business from the public, oh, excuse me, business from the council. Who would like to go first?
I would.
Counselor Smith, you go first.
Thank you, and this is in deference to Mr. Rice, who asked about the pedestrian path at 36th and Hermine. I drove by today and noticed that someone has kind of attempted to make the change already. There's a big in the chain link, a part of it. I don't know if that was a result of an accident or vandalism or an expression of opinion, but the fence is not whole, but it's not big enough to crawl through. I haven't heard from any other neighbors in that area for a long time, and I don't know if other, if folks at City Hall have had complaints about that, but he astutely points out that it's likely that the troublemakers have graduated from high school and gone on by now. I don't believe they were residents of the area, judging from the information we got from the neighbors who complained back in 2010. So I'm interested to hear what other people might have to say about maintaining that fence or making a change. It was a very handy path and a good way to circumvent two really busy streets.
We can come back and bring you some feedback. I don't know if we'll have a chance to poll neighbors, but we can certainly come back with Ron Irish's perspective and Chris Bailey's.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Hey, Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I will say with regard to that, I think, Mr. Rice, you did a really good job presenting the information, and I looked at the photos, and I thought, it makes a lot of sense to open that up. You can walk through if it were open, and I hope we can take care of that. I think, as I say, it makes a lot of sense, so I'm in favor of it. The other thing, I have actually two things. One is, at the last meeting, there was a gentleman who spoke out about the school board, and unless I misunderstood, I thought that he said that there was no longer diversity personnel at GAPS. So I looked into that, and there is a team, and it is headed by a woman named Kelsey Nava Costalis, and I've heard that she's very down-to-earth. And I looked in further and found that the school board does not take in-person testimony because they don't want their meetings to last till midnight, but they do welcome written statements. And I attended on Monday after our work session, my very first listening session, which I found to be rather interesting. I spoke with some folks afterward who presented situations to the superintendent and the two board members who were present, and that was very interesting because I asked them questions that they told me they couldn't answer because of the union. So, and that was the same sort of interchange that I witnessed when they were sharing information with the school board. They could communicate to a degree, but they couldn't talk, they couldn't talk because of the union, so I don't know. It was interesting, though, and I'm glad I went. And I can tell you, there is the diversity staff, and it consists of seven people. And they also did say that written comments are welcomed, and I witnessed the public sharing, they have eight minutes at a time. So there is definitely opportunity for some degree of interaction, depending on what your union will and will not let you say. The final thing that I have this evening is potentially great news in that the hole that is currently on the Travel Advisory Commission with Mr. Steve Reynolds having stepped down, I will find out by the end of this week or early next week whether someone that has been approached in my actual ward is willing to serve. So I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful. We'll see what happens.
Thanks for that update, Counsel. Next, I will go with Counselor Kopczynski.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Montague?
I have nothing.
Counselor McGee?
Nothing.
Well, then I'll use your time. So I had the honor of attending my first library on court. It was a great event, so the library staff did a fantastic job. I bought a really nice bottle of wine for dinner, and it was fantastic. And so I encourage you to attend next year's library on court. A lot of people made some outrageous bids on certain things, but it was nice to see the community out and about in the library in the evening. I didn't know this until the other day, that avid schools, South Albany is actually a showcase school for avid. And so avid's an educational program for people of less fortunate, lower income, to get access to additional training, not access, but some training that they can apply for colleges with more skill sets than they normally would get. There was high schools from all over the state attending that certification process, and I didn't know that they were the leader in this area on avid training for teachers and students. So it was great, hats off to them. Literacy Night in America, a lot of us attended that, at the different schools around town. I had a great time at Sunrise. Then I ran over to Oak School, and I had to compete with the Carvallos Police Dogs, or the Fire Department Dogs, that wasn't fair. But, and then they had pigs at Sunrise, piglets at Sunrise Elementary. We had a great time, a lot of children came. And typically, what I do is instead of just reading to the kids, I make a circle of chairs, and I take a book, and I introduce the book, and I read two pages, and I hand it to the child next to me. Then I hand it to her parent, her guardian, and then they hand it to another child. So we had read four books in 30 minutes, but everybody participated in that reading, so it was fantastic. Books were worth bedtimes out at Oak. Attended the DSA Awards, I think a lot of us were there that evening. It was a great award turnout, great people got some awards, and it was nice to see that we recognized a legacy award for Lynn County Commissioner Roger Nyquist. And then the next day, I went to the All-City Dance Show. If you haven't gone, you need to go. Our young ladies, they showed up, they showed out, our Albany gems, both high schools, they did a great job dancing, and Lebanon High School and the other schools around the area. It was three hours of just fantastic time with the community, and these young ladies and young men, they put on a show. It was fantastic. I've been busy. I did attend the Governor's Tourism Awards Conference. Our Rebecca Bond received an award, a leadership award, and so we've asked her, I've asked her to come and do her presentation in a future meeting, and Peter's going to get it on the agenda at some point. But there's a great video about the city of Albany, there's pictures of Albany, video of drone flying around and then showing Albany. So it was a kind of a showcase in front of all these tourism organizations. I was, had the honor of meeting Dr. Haffey, the new Oregon Health Authority Chair, at Kalani Paz over in Lebanon. She took a tour, and we kind of talked about the buildings, what they want to do here in Albany. And so when she comes to Albany to visit with us, I'd love to have the council join me in that conversation. And then, a bunch on here. Oh, today I attended West Albany's Career Fair, and I did have them put you on the schedule for, agenda for next year, Peter. I'm like, she goes, I totally forgot about asking him. I said, well, here's his contact information, so you're going to be on there next time. And I think I'll shut up now. So I am done. So next on the agenda is business from our city manager.
Okay, just a few things. Rebecca Bond is on the agenda for the 27th of March, so the next council meeting. As far as the bid tabs that you were talking about, Counselor Kopczynski, you do and you will still see those for construction projects. This is for consultants in design. And Counselor Montague, thank you for commenting on the consent calendar. It's good every so often to remember why the consent calendar exists. It's really a time-saving device during these meetings. There's sometimes a lot of business on that calendar, as you point out. We don't put anything on that calendar that needs the benefit of public attention. It's mostly routine things that have been worked up and just need the blessing of the Let's see here. I want to tell you that on the 24th of March, which is next, a week from Sunday, the ODOT will start work on the Ellsworth Bridge. And if you'll recall, they'll be raising the support structures. But what that involves is that they will be working at night from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday through Friday. So they're trying to keep the weekends clear, and they're trying to keep the daytime traffic clear. Now, that doesn't mean that traffic won't be able to cross, southbound traffic, let's see here, southbound traffic won't be able to cross, they'll just both be using the Lyon Street Bridge in one-way tra, or one-lane traffic. And on Thursday evenings, when we have River Rhythms concerts, they won't be doing their work. So as people try to exit Albany after concerts, they won't be slowed down by the construction, okay? And there'll be more on that on our social media, and we'll get that information out in many ways. There's a joint wastewater management committee meeting tomorrow evening, for those of you that are on that committee, with Millersburg at 5:00, and you should have received notice of that. And then lastly, I'll tell you that I will be out of the office tomorrow afternoon and Friday, so Friday's report will be a Thursday report. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And I did miss one thing on my list. Optimists Club had its annual youth appreciation awards last night at LBCC, and some great young people were recognized that night, yesterday, and it was, it was great to see these young people that are aspiring to do more, to do better, to achieve, and they were very appreciative of the gifts provided by the Optimists Club, so thank you for Christine reminding me to say that, so. And, okay, and then today, or yesterday, I was also interviewed by North Albany Elementary School's third-grade class as their Person of the Year, so I'm hoping that I get selected. It was amazing, and it was a lot of fun. And so Counselor Smith has a question for the city manager?
The bridge construction starts on the 24th of March, and you mentioned the River Rhythms concerts, which are in the summer?
Right.
What's the anticipated completion date for that bridge?
It's a long time, huh?
It's a long time.
It is.
August 25th?
Okay.
Wow.
So we won't be here anyway, because we have off. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and also, please remember, we do have, as a city council, we do have the early first week of August, or second week of August, to all the way to mid-September, so y'all can go on vacation, just spend time with family, so I'm pretty excited about that. And with that, I will say the next meeting dates are, are we meeting on the 25th? I mean, the 20, no.
No, the 25th work session has been canceled.
Thank you very much.
So your next meeting is the 27th.
So the next meeting is March 27th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. I look forward to seeing you all then. Have a great weekend, and it's still light outside, so take your walk, enjoy your family. Thank you. I adjourn.